Who are online and those here in the courthouse waiting and our guests for your patients, we had some technical difficulties with Zoom, but we think we're back up. This is the work session of the Douglas County Commission for November 1st. And we're here to receive an update on the Treatment and Recovery Center. And I'm going to turn it over to Bob Tryansky to kick us off. Just a reminder, for those of you who are here in person or online, all of our work sessions are for information purposes only. We don't take public comment at these meetings, but if you have any public comment you'd like to share with the commission, you're welcome to join us at our 5:30 business meeting. Bob?
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Commissioners. I'm not going to take any time on the introduction here. The TRC has been open for six months. And when we signed the agreement with Burt Nash in April, everyone will know that there's an initial term of the agreement for eight months to be renewed at the end of the year. So we thought this would be the perfect time for an update from the Treatment and Recovery Center team. They've made tremendous progress over the last couple of months. And I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Schmitz to introduce the leadership team and to take us through the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Commissioners and Sarah, for the opportunity to be here. I won't take a lot of time. We're just honored to be a part of this project. And I'll introduce my team quickly and a couple of people that are in the room. Stephen O'Neill, Chief Operations Officer, Dr. Court Houston, Medical Director, Bree Harmon-Moore, Director of the TRC. Tim Nolte is online. He's our Data Quality Analyst, so if he needs to jump in, he'll be available to us. And I want to introduce you to Ryan Storch, who is our new Senior Director of Crisis Services. Ryan, raise your hand over there. Ryan will sit in a space of over the TRC Crisis Services, but also how do we integrate the mobile response team, our co-responder team, and how did they then better integrate with the overall emergency response system? He brings 17 years of experience. And so someday in the future, we'll bring Ryan back for a little bit more, but moving on. So I'll turn it right over then to the team.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We're so happy to be here today to share some of our successes since opening. So we have been open now for six months, like Bob mentioned, and would like to start off with sharing that we have, here's some of our highlights. We've met 96% of the milestones that have been outlined in our agreement with the county. 100% of those milestones are now completed. 96% were on time. Our targets, we are at 80% of our agreement targets being currently met. And I think the most exciting thing that we would like to highlight are the individuals served. We have had 1,504 client bed days, and that has been since we opened the inpatient side of our facility on May 25th. So May 25th through the end of September, we have been able to serve 1,504 clients in patient in beds. We've had 1,153 client episodes of care, and then 780 unique clients have been served. So that is an outstanding number that we were all pretty impressed by at the facility. Oh, next, oh, sorry, Tim, next slide. Thought Carrie was doing it, I'm sorry. Here's a little outline of our milestones and our, where we kind of fell on our, on the phases of our opening and the things that we had outlined when we signed our agreement. And this just kind of outlines all of the checkboxes and where we have hit. Everything, we have met every milestone on time. The one that we were late on, that we have met now at this point, is trying to figure out a formal process for notifying outpatient providers. That's just been kind of logistically challenging, trying to figure out how to track that. We've been doing like kind of workaround sorts of things, but we really want to nail in kind of like a formal, what our next steps are going to be, how that's going to be completed throughout the facility with each and every patient. So we think we've got a pretty good outline for that in place at this point. All right, next slide. Here are some information about our staffing. We are always hiring and always continuing to build our staffing. For therapists, we've had zero turnover, which has been fantastic. I've actually got two more onboarding in our next new employee orientation, which is exciting. That's in November. Unit coordinators have been really critical. They've been partnering to kind of cover behavioral health specialist duties in areas, and then they also have been working with case management. So they've really been able to lift the burden on some of the other needs and kind of a hybrid sort of position. We have had some success with doing a new graduate kind of hiring program for RNs and LPNs. And then LPNs in lieu of RNs has been a really, a new, a new idea from the nurse managers that's been really successful in getting some nursing staff in onboard, especially overnights. We had nine new hires for October for our new employee orientation last week, and our current total staff is 83 at the TRC, which is really exciting. All right, next slide.
Is 83 then the full staffing number? I know we've been ramping up through that time, or there's still some other positions to fill?
We have, we have a few more to fill. And again, we're, when we talk about 83 people, that's different than like FTEs. So, yeah. Okay, so this is, we are also excited. DECA has been able to hire some peers, and they are started, they've started, or I guess they're starting this week. And my team has been communicating with DECA on how we're going to get them trained up at the TRC and get them integrated. So we're super excited to have them. And, yeah, and they have a summary of their hiring initiatives there, but we're excited to get some people onboard. Here's a brief, a brief update on our CARF accreditation. We completed our application for the supplemental visit in June, this summer. We had a mock survey with our BRB consultants in August that went really well. And then we have a, our scheduled CARF survey is at the beginning of December. So we're excited and we feel like we're ready at this point to, to get up and fully accredited at that point. And we anticipate having a decision by January, February, so early next year for a full decision.
Can you share for those who don't know what CARF means and what BRB means?
Yes. So CARF is one of the accrediting, I don't know if anybody knows the full, spell it out.
It's the Council on the Accreditation of Rehabilitation Facilities.
Thank you. But is one of the major accreditation types for facilities and hospitals. And so they are the one that we've selected to accredit our facility. And that we're already accredited, Burt Nash has several programs that are accredited already, and so this will be a supplemental to get us fully accredited. And then BRB is our consultants that we utilize to kind of give us some guidance and tips on what we can improve on before CARF comes in. So they've been really helpful as well.
So on this slide, this is a slide that you guys, this is a slide that you previously have seen in our, in our last presentation to you. We've added a little, a couple of items onto it. Talks about our crisis services and the continuum of care for how people get in to me, come and get help. And you see that with, we now have the emergency room is able to go and send people to us to keep crisis facility as Treatment Recovery Center. The bottleneck that we are experiencing in the crisis center is one that, you know, we had told you it was likely to occur. That bottleneck is occurring both at the emergency room level and at the Treatment Recovery Center level, in that there are no inpatient beds in Douglas County. And it has been a real challenge to go and, when we have a patient who needs an inpatient bed, to get them to that bed within that 72-hour timeframe that we have to stabilize somebody. This is going to continue to be an issue until we find a way to go and get that managed. Right now, OSH wait times, OSH wait times are two to four weeks. So people can be stuck inside either one, either one of those for up to that amount of time.
You're talking about Osawatomie State Hospital, is that right?
That's correct. So Osawatomie State Hospital has, is currently only taking involuntary admissions, and the wait time is excessive.
So where, where do people go in between, in those two to four weeks?
During that two to four weeks, people are either remain in the emergency room, or we are helping them inside of our facility.
And are we able to keep folks over 72 hours?
We are supposed to keep people only for 72 hours. We sometimes will make exceptions, but those are exceptions and not, non-standard.
One more question about that. So you just mentioned that currently Osawatomie is only taking involuntary. When did that shift to only taking involuntary?
It's been that way for several years, at least.
At least seven.
Yeah, at least seven.
Okay, thank you. Because I was sitting here thinking, I'm like, I mean, I think it's been that way for a while, so I just want to contextualize that. Do we have any knowledge or awareness, indication on a state level of if and when that might change and, and what it would take to, to change? I know that's sort of a big question, but I just want to put context to it because it is a big pressure point.
It is, it is a big pressure point, and I know the state is doing what it can at this point to reduce that. They are anticipating building a 50-bed unit down in the Wichita area. That's a new thing that they, half of that will be similar to OSH in terms of accepting patients. We're not sure what the region or the catchment area for that is going to be. The other 25 is going to be more like the learned beds, whoever competes a restoration and people connected to the justice system. There is also plans for construction of a fairly large facility in the Kansas City metro area. That is through KVC and Children's Mercy, and that will have adult and children bed. But our need is right now that getting somebody there to any of the other facilities is very challenging, so.
Maybe it'd be helpful to also talk about the context of, of, you know, other hospital inpatient beds besides state hospital beds and the complexity.
Sure, like the State Institute Alternatives and some of the other ones who aren't State Institute Alternatives. You guys could talk a little bit about.
The county, the layout or the Kansas City base, and the challenges of getting our folks into those.
So we are able to go and, or it?
So, right now, if we have, if we have patients that want voluntary placement for hospitalization, so that's somebody that says, I want to go, I want to go to the hospital, we can outreach any facility that accepts whatever payment type they have. So some facilities will only take private insurance. If that person has private insurance, then great. But what we find often is that the acuity level that individuals have been presenting with is more than the hospitals that takes, like, patients for inpatient is, the acuity level is too high. And so we often get denials for that. We will often get denials for medical things. So if people have comorbidities with medical conditions, even kind of minimal ones, so maybe some uncontrolled diabetes or a little, you know, something that, like that, they will decline them for admission for that. So that, those are, those are some of the other inpatient facilities. We run up against that a lot. So it's, it's very hard to get, even for people that want hospitalization, to get them in. Now, if somebody doesn't want hospitalization, that's a whole nother challenge. And of course, Osawatomie, we've already talked about, and then we have the similar issues with the SIAs, as the, those are the alternatives to Osawatomie. And we run into the same thing. Either the acuity is too high, or they're at capacity. Everybody's just filled up, so.
How many people are currently in that bottleneck, either in our emergency department or at the TRC, kind of waiting on a bed?
It's probably hard to quantify. It changes day to day because OSH, you know, OSH takes people every day. We get people every day, so. But I would say that we always, it seems like we're, we at the TRC are always at least involved with one or two a day that we're trying to find something for, either within our own facility or at LMH. So I'm sure the need is pretty great. If we're touching one or two of those patients, that, that LMH is probably have, touching several more, so.
I have one more question. Bree, I really appreciate sort of what you just illustrated in the context of what those voluntary referrals look like and attempts to try and get folks in. On top of you sort of, all the data and all the stuff that you are tracking and trying to mitigate for, I'm curious if you have been tracking on some level sort of the, the denials that you get. Specifically, that acuity piece is interesting to me to hear, and that that is a particular reason. I'm also interested in the comorbidity and the medical issues, like what, if it helps us identify where locally there are additional barriers that we might be able to remove, but also on a statewide level. I mean, I suppose some of the hospitals we're talking about have mixed funding, just like TRC does, and they are different types of licensed facilities than, than TRC are, right? Like, there's all those nuances, I suppose, that vary from hospital to hospital or facility to facility. But I'm just thinking about on it, I recognize that so many things stem from a state, statewide barriers sometimes, or regulations that I wonder if, you know, we as a body need to be thinking about and informed about to help alleviate some of the pressure on that bottleneck, right? Like, on a regional level, even that we may not have local control over, but can try to pay attention to or advocate for. I guess I just wanted to say those comments out loud, and I want to stay curious about that because I imagine that that, that need can just continue to compound and grow, and if we aren't figuring out where, even on a voluntary level, people are hitting into roadblocks that they, that you all are finding impossible to move out of the way. I want to understand that better.
This is Stephen, Chief Operating Officer at Burt Nash. I would say the roadblocks, particularly to voluntary placements, are not regulatory in nature. The reality is, folks don't want to take our patients. And we are managing a level of acuity at our crisis center that the hospitals don't want to manage. We had someone waiting for a state hospital bed for over two weeks. And, you know, it's, so it's not a regulatory issue. It is a issue where these hospitals, they don't, they don't have an agreement that says they can't turn people away. So they do.
And so they set their admission criteria, and they can fluctuate depending on literally who operates it, who the medical admissions person is, who's, who makes that final decision to say yes or no. And it can vary from week to week, in fact. So it's, it's a pretty complicated process, and I wish there was an easy answer, but there isn't. And it's, you would know.
To kind of give you an example of what kind of this process looks like, and I won't name the facility, but we had a, a simple patient with severe depression, suicidal ideations, who needed true inpatient. When we contacted this facility, they said, you have to get them medically cleared. Well, they're at our facility, they're already medically cleared. That wasn't good enough, so they wanted additional labs, things like blood counts and chemistry levels, which have nothing to do with depression. And they wanted us to go obtain those, which we did. So we spent the better part of the day drawing somebody's blood, which is an invasive procedure, getting the blood, testing the blood. And they came back and they said, your nurse practitioners are not qualified to go and medically clear somebody. So I wouldn't, I saw them. I'm a, I'm a board-certified physician, state of Kansas, practice medicine and surgery. Came back and said that I was not qualified to medically clear a patient, and that they would like us to transfer the patient to LMH for their medical clearance. We got LMH to go and see the patient and medically clear them and brought them back to us. And then at the end of it, they said, we would like you to just go ahead and transfer them to our emergency room, which is an IMTA violation. And so after spending eight hours of trying to go jump through hoops for a patient who had good insurance, best insurance, simple case, there's absolutely no reason not to take the patient, we still weren't able to place that patient with that facility. And they had open beds.
So just to put a fine point on it, so that patient stays either in our ER or at the TRC, and the cost of treating that patient, and just the, the TRC isn't really designed to treat that patient, but we take that on because of our compassion and for, and our relationship with the patient, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so there's two slides on a financial update, and the, go ahead and, well, I'll touch on this slide first. So when we drafted the budget for 2023, we anticipated 4.1 million in Kansas CIC funding, just over 3 million in fee revenue, and 1.6 million from Douglas County. What we are projecting, and I'll get into this in a little more detail, is that we will draw down the 4.1 million in CIC revenue. We will have about 2.68 million in fee revenue, and we will draw down just over 70,000 in the Proposition 1 funding. So let me give, go to the next slide, Tim. Let me give this a little context first. So it's important to note that in the current model of the TRC, the revenue always equals the expense. So currently, the net bottom line is zero. The only way it would not be zero is if we exceeded the total of the three numbers in the first pie. So until we run out of available revenue, the revenue and expense are always the same. So in this case, the revenue variance does not create a bottom line, like, negative. So that's important to remember. The other important thing is that this was based off of September 23, year-to-date financials, so there's still three months of the year left in which our staffing and our service provision will continue to ramp up. There are reasons why we are spending less than we anticipated. The first has to do with our health insurance plan. Burt Nash migrated from a fully insured to a self-funded health plan. That has been a significant cost reduction for Burt Nash, and that's translating to decreased expense for the Treatment and Recovery Center. Also, the specific employee health plan selection mix is creating an expense, favorable expense variance. Employees are selecting more affordable plans, and we have more individuals selecting plans versus group families. And in addition to that, we are also outperforming our self-funded estimates as an organization, which is a third savings related to the health plan. Then we have lower-than-anticipated pharmacy costs. This is going to true up in October, and that has to do with the timing of the invoicing and payment sigler. We have lower-than-anticipated security costs. There's two elements there. The timing of when the service started, and then when we received and remitted payment on the invoices associated with that service. And another significant savings is the cleaning services and supplies. So we're running 18 hours of cleaning service as opposed to 24, which we budgeted for. 18 hours is proving to be more than sufficient, so we're going to continue to run with that. And also, our supply budget is extremely favorable. When we built the budget, we utilized the information we had from the previous sort of vision, and we are realizing, at least so far, that we don't need as many cleaning supplies and other supplies as we thought. And then another area is an overhead expense associated with operational support. So it's based on the headcount at the TRC, and we actually didn't budget it that way. So in this instance, the TRC is benefiting from the fact that we're tying the overhead support to the headcount. So it was lower, it's lower when we had less employees, and then it's ramping up. The theory is, you know, when there's less employees, you're serving less clients, and you don't need as much HR support, finance support. So because in our model, it's so cost-based, the expense savings are the primary driver of why the revenue variance exists. So that is, I'll pause there, and then I'll talk about 2024.
So that's a good question, Stephen. So with those cost savings that presumably will also be projected into the future, so that, just what's been learned about either the insurance needs or the cleaning services and supplies and such, why is the 2024 budget revised to be higher?
So do you want me to answer the, I can talk about the 2024 budget. I was going to pause for questions on '23, but I can go ahead, and I also have a statement on the 2024 budget. So I can, I'll go with that. So this number is, the 11.535 million is the number that was submitted to the state of Kansas as part of our cost rebase with the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic model. We are still in negotiations with the state. We actually can't realistically complete a TRC budget or a Burt Nash budget until those negotiations are final. 60% of the revenue of the TRC hinges on that negotiation. But the 11.5 million number was arrived at by taking our, known our actual costs from July 1st to the end of May 23. Then it factored in what's called your known anticipated costs from, which would have been June and July of '23. And then it includes our, what's called fully anticipated costs, which are costs you haven't incurred yet at the time you submit your cost study. So it adds those three things together. And then it applies the Medicare Economic Index adjustments, and the number that it spit out was 11.535 million. That may be a different number than what happens when we actually go to rebuild the 2024 budget for the TRC. But it will be more than the, it likely will be more than the 10.4 million. The primary The primary driver there is increased costs of labor and increased costs of materials. And those, especially labor, continues to increase dramatically. And we are employing people like registered nurses and nurse practitioners that can literally work anywhere tomorrow and name their price.
What's the timeline for the negotiations for the CCPHC?
I ask that question frequently. My understanding is we're getting close to where we would come to the table with the state and finalize our rate. I feel very confident about our cost reports. We're good at doing them. We get a lot of positive feedback from the state about them. So I anticipate it will, it will go well. The other thing that will happen is when we built the 24 budget, I never assumed that the state would allow us to include anticipated costs. And they are. So that will be a positive for the TRC in 24.
So if I understand right, none of that difference between your original and revised is new positions. It's just the cost of the increased labor cost and the increased material cost. Is that what?
Yeah, for the most part. We have tweaked our prescriber model a little bit that added some expense to be able to keep up with the volume and manage the acuity, particularly overnight and on the weekends. But the vast majority of that is increased costs of existing labor.
And it's not in this report, but you could provide us before we get to the 2024 budget, sort of what those changes are and the difference in wages and costs on some of that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I guess I'd also like to say from what I'm hearing, Stephen, really, when this says 2024 budget and for anyone listening, this is still pretty much, this isn't final. So this is a proposed budget at this point and is still evolving.
Yes.
Okay. But before the end of the year, per our agreement, we will be back before the county commission to finalize the 24 budget. And the county commission's amount is set and was set as a part of the 24 budget process.
Thanks. That was my next question is what impact this would have on our 2024 budget?
Our budget's set, so we'll just continue to work through it. And as Stephen said, it's really a lot about the revenue associated with coming in from the PPS rate.
I think, next slide.
Okay, so these were some of our key performance indicators that we discussed in our agreement. Again, just things to highlight, our access to care. So clients receiving referrals at discharge, we've been tracking 87%. People that have been discharged to the community from our facility is 98%. We've had really great efficiency for people coming into urgent care and then being seen, which is, so the registration to being seen is 23 minutes on average, which is awesome. And then to disposition, so from being seen to being released or discharged from urgent care, 59 minutes. So that could be placement or that could be seeing a prescriber in addition. So that's, that's pretty, pretty great, too. And then our drop-off time for police is, has been four minutes, which is well under our 10-minute goal. We have gotten some really great customer satisfaction. So our net promoter score right now is 44. That's the overall satisfaction. Client satisfaction is 58, so that's even better. And then 38 is the family member. So really proud of those numbers and we're really excited to just keep it up.
Could you explain a little bit of the net promoter score? Because I know that's something I've learned through this process.
Yeah, will you explain that? This is an odd, this is an odd process.
So the net promoter score was developed based on a lot of research about what satisfaction really means. And they distilled it down to the most important or only question you need to ask is would you refer your friend or family member to the service? Because they realize that people will subject themselves to things that they wouldn't subject a friend or family member to. So you want your net promoter score to be positive. You want it to be above zero. So anything above zero, you're considered to have more promoters than detractors. And Tim is online. He's our data analyst. Tim, I'm going to phone a friend if you want to add anything on there.
Nope, you nailed it on the head, man. Ultimately, it's a scale of zero to 10 on answering that question of how likely you are to recommend a friend or colleague to the service. So promoters are anybody that answered nine or 10. Detractors are zero through six. Seven, eight on that scale, you would be considered a passive. So not feeling strongly one way or another. You take the percentage of promoters minus the percentage of detractors and you get your net promoter score.
This is Commissioner Reed, thank you. That, both explanations helped me immensely. My final question about that is, do you know what percentage of people are answering that question? If it's only a, truly a one question, ask. Tim, do you know that?
That is a really good question. Bree, you might be able to answer it in a roundabout way on talking about the process for us gathering this specific, the results to the specific question with our discharge process.
So I think, so how we are gathering information right now is we have kiosks at our facilities. So we've got people, when they discharge, they are answering questions upon discharge. So when they're checking out, nursing staff is working with them. They have got a little tablet in front of them and they can answer questions there. In addition, we have a kiosk right outside of our, right in front of our door, I guess, in urgent care. So people that are only in urgent care as they enter, leave, family members, whoever can, there's like a smiley face rating scale of your, how was your experience today? Whenever they can touch and tap that. So we're gathering it in a couple of different ways. So that's, that's kind of, I guess, how we're currently gathering that information and how it feeds into the net promoter score.
We can answer the questions specifically. We'll follow up. So we'll just look at how many surveys we've received and compare that to the number of people we served.
Yeah, because I, it comes off, I mean, we think of it as a percentage, right? And so 38 doesn't feel very high to me as a percentage, but that's not what that number is. But without a comparison to the total number, it's really hard to make a sense of what, I mean, you're saying it's good and it must be. But, but just having that to relate to it would be helpful.
Yeah, nope, that makes sense. We'll get you the info.
I have one other, I know we're pushing, we're in a bit of a time crunch. But another question about this slide is that access to care, the percentage of clients receiving referral at discharge? Two questions. One, can you just define what receiving a referral means? Like, how, how broad is that?
It's very broad. So that could be a referral to, like, that could be a new client being referred to Burt Nash for additional services. It could be an existing client that's receiving a referral to another community resource like DECA, Radac, anybody else. It's, or it could just be somebody being referred to, you know, back to their community, like if they go to Vallejo. So that's, it's very broad.
Okay, that, that helps because I wasn't sure if it meant specifically to other Burt Nash services or if it was broadly defined, so that helps.
Yes.
So then can you help me understand like the, the other 13% and why someone might not receive a referral, for example, or be counted as having received a referral upon discharge?
So some, and you know, this is kind of a case-by-case thing. So people may already be very involved in services and may not clinically need any additional services. So if they're already very engaged in several different services or kind of have a full array of what they're needing, then they just don't need any additional referrals. So it's always been evaluated about the referral need, but either they're refusing a referral, they don't want one, or they just aren't needed. So.
That helps, thank you.
At times, we have patients who come in and a couple hours later, they would like to discharge and they haven't had an opportunity to meet in order to get that referral as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to spell it out, so I appreciate that. And then last question is, can, the percentage of discharge to the community is the alternative to that inpatient? So you're saying 98% at some point in time is going back into the community and not to any sort of, not on to an inpatient facility, whether that's voluntary or involuntary?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, and then I don't think I talked about our efficiency, I'm sorry. Our, so that's just about our average length of stay. So that's between, oh, sorry. It's a new slide, you guys, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is additional information. So access to care, so our referrals, this is how many referrals we accept, 99.5. We accept everybody. The very small percentage of people that we aren't accepting are solely for medical reasons. And that's, of course, not just, that isn't a decision I would make. That's a decision that's made in congruence with, with the team and with Dr. Houston.
I would say almost all of that 0.5% was us just little growing pains of figuring out the process early on.
Yeah, we had two very early on, first two weeks fluke sort of decisions that in evaluating them, we would have made differently. And there are two patients who, for a period of time, we could not admit due to, they assaulted repeatedly our nursing staff. And, and we just can't, we have to protect our workforce.
So very small percentage, but that's our goal, is to be able to accept everybody that comes to the door. Our involuntary commitment referrals converted to voluntary. So again, that's always our goal, is to work with individuals that come in on an involuntary basis. We want to work with them and get them to be able to agree to be voluntary patients. That's been, that's higher success for, for the patient and we get better treatment success. So that's 84%. We have 98% of not referred to the emergency department for medical care. We track the, we track people that we, for whatever reason, need to send to the ER. If they come in and we admit them and something goes awry, we track that. So again, it's very few, very few individuals that we, we have to divert back to the ER. And then, of course, we want to take them back if we can. And then we've got an 83% score in people reporting that they're able to, they feel that they're able to better manage their crisis in the future, which is fantastic. And then our readmission rates, which are about 24, 25% there.
Can anybody give a little bit of context to that? Like, do we know what readmission, average readmission rates elsewhere look like? I know, I know it's a little bit hard to compare because we're the first version of this facility in the state, but.
So one of the things that's really interesting, so hospitals have this readmission rate and they get penalized if the patient comes back. Our facility, we are the crisis plan for the patient. We want them to come back if they're having trouble because if they come back early, we can keep somebody from having to go into needing inpatient care. So 24%, 26% of our patients have come back to us. And we think that's okay. Because that gives us another opportunity to continue working with them. We continue to help them get through things. So we, we don't see a readmission rate as a negative as part of the safety plan for all of our patients that come to Burt Nash.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that's something I thought about when I was reading that. And just wondering if they're, you know, even on a national level, like crisis intervention centers that are tracking or talking about what those, what sort of a healthy readmission rate looks like to sort of know that you've engaged patients who are, who trust you enough to keep coming back and when they need, right? Because we know that many things don't happen as an isolated incident, an isolated crisis for people. So I'm just curious about that number and appreciate that you all are tracking it and, and wonder what it looks like in the context of this particular work. And which is probably even hard to compare to, you know, psychiatric inpatient facilities, right? That's a, might say different things at a facility like that versus a traditional community hospital.
And one of the things that I'm expecting, and it'll be a really interesting phenomenon, is that most, in, in the old continuum of care, right? A person got a on-the-moment intervention, maybe they got a medication. And then you're, then there's kind of that loss to follow up. As we are seeing patients and inside of the TRC, we're not just starting a mess and we're actively treating. We're in the process of helping you get better. And then we hand off to our outpatient services to continue that. I forecast that our rates will go up for admission. Then we're going to start seeing that they're going to start coming down because people are going to be healthier in the community long-term. All right, and so I expected that we'll see that curve and over the next one to two years.
I think the other cool thing, the cool opportunity for us has been is to see when individuals come in and they may be engaged with services already, but they're in crisis. It's given us the opportunity to be able to identify, are there other things that we can do to kind of like pad, pad the services right now to build you up so that you've got what you need right now? And that we can, we kind of get you to the next, get you over the hump and get you to the next place? So that's, that's been great. When they come back, it's been, it's been great for us to be able to identify that and kind of see what's not working and what maybe we could do differently to get a better outcome. So we're happy when they come back.
I'm really glad that you shared that because I'll tell you, when I look through these, the information you provided, it's so exciting. I mean, and we, we really need to celebrate the progress you've made in a short amount of time. I mean, I'll be honest, this exceeded my expectations when I look at these numbers. And that's really something to celebrate. But I, I want to give you all the opportunity to reflect a little bit on just sort of what you've learned since you've been open. And that might be one of them. And not, you know, surely you can talk about the negatives, but also what you've learned positively. I think sometimes when we ask that question, we want to say like, be critical of yourself. What's, but also I want to give you an opportunity, all of you, to share what you feel really good about from, from the impact that it's had on our community.
I think it's been really great to have a place where people can come and we will help with literally anything. I mean, people will come in and just have questions about like a food pantry or how they can get a ride somewhere. And that's, I mean, to not have a barrier and not have to wait for six hours to get help or not have to wait for an appointment for, you know, a week or whatever, to just get those questions answered. It's, it's been really cool to see and to, to get, we've already gotten a ton of comments and compliments from our clients. People have come back and, and written us letters. And it's been so great to see that like even little things that we've done have really touched people's lives and made an impact for them and for their families. So that's been, I think that's been really, really cool to be a part of. It's just letting, having, letting people have a place to come and, and just ask whatever question they need and they can get their help.
I agree with everything Bree just said.
For me, I think about the opportunity to develop a team and watch our TRC team members grow and lean into doing something that is challenging and new. People ask, or people will say, I'm overwhelmed, I don't know what I'm doing. And the reality is, is that none of us did or do. We are figuring it out every day. But to see our team focused on providing quality care and compassionate care and to know that we've accepted 99.5% of people that have come in. And creating a culture of yes is very challenging. And I'm proud of the team for being able to do that and that this resource is available. And I'm proud of the team for being able to do that and that this resource is available. I don't know that there's any negatives other than, you know, taking care of our workforce in all of the ways so that we have it and that we can staff the facility. I, at the risk of sounding less than humble, I think if outsiders took a look at what we are doing and what we've accomplished, I think our community should be incredibly proud.
I would echo everything they say and, and I would say anything different would be what we have at times done after we went through challenging times and worked through the difficulties that while we didn't like them during the time, they tend to always be in our best interest and our favor. And that by collaborating and working through those challenges, we end up with a better product than we envisioned at the outset. And I think that's where we're at. And while I knew I had an incredible team, to see what they have done day in and day out to make this a reality is, is humbling to me. They never stop thinking how to do it better and how to say yes, just say yes to the patient. So that's some of the stuff that I've, I can take away from this. So thank you for the opportunity to do that.
And Patrick, I, I want to name an elephant that I think exists in this room was it was hard getting to where we are right now. And I want to give you all an opportunity to talk about the relationship you've had with Douglas County in making this happen, because, you know, these metrics that we asked for, this data that we asked for, I remember, you know, I had a conversation of was this a lot? And it was. And I just want, I want to hear from you all how that relationship is going, if you feel that strong, and ways that we can help be better partners in that.
You know, when I, when I talk to my colleagues around the state and, and they look at the amount of support Burt Nash gets and, and the other providers, they, they're without a doubt jealous. But they also come to realize to whom much is given, much is expected. And I remind them of that, that in exchange for significant support and, and helping our community live a different life and have a different experience, a lot is expected of us. And that can be daunting at times, but we have to lean into it and we have to accept it because it does make us a better organization. I mean, the, the metrics that Stephen and Dr. Houston and Bob agreed to were ambitious. They were stretch goals and yet they are doing fantastic with those. And it has allowed us to be better as an organization overall, but obviously stand up something truly unique, I would say, in the nation. There, I mean, are we the only? No, we're not the only, but we are one of a handful that is doing the work that, that we are doing together as a community. And doing it together does result in excellent outcomes. So we, we truly appreciate the opportunity to do the work. And I think as a result of it, we continue to get closer and stronger together.
Could I share a staff reflection? One of the things that struck me as we've worked through this, and it has not been an easy process at times. This team has leaned into, courageously leaned into areas of risk that other communities haven't taken, other crisis centers haven't taken, and commitments that haven't been made to other communities. I appreciate the leadership at Burt Nash and at TRC to say, this is, this is an ambitious goal, but let's not run away from it and let's not water it down. This team continually has been able to sort of lean into those three values that we talked about months ago, which was transparency, accountability, and a commitment to continuous quality improvement. I am very grateful that we went through some of the things that we went through, because we have a working relationship here that I think is yielding great results and yields things like, I know that early on there were, what should the, and it's not just with TRC, it's with the other services as well. What should the exclusionary criteria be for this? How do we define who's not right for this? And the TRC team has leaned into, thanks to Bree's leadership, thanks to Dr. Houston's leadership, you should bring them to us and we'll take it from there. And they have delivered on that commitment that was made months ago and we continue to lean into what that means and what we have to do to be able to continue to do that. So I just want to, I want to acknowledge that and express gratitude for it, because I think those were the areas where we were skeptical or not, not sure we would be able to collaborate in that way, because other communities haven't. The other thing I just also wanted to just say, it may be come back at another time, but there was also, there has also been tremendous progress in paneling private insurers. This team has made remarkable progress on that in ways that we didn't expect, that it's a much more healthy financial model for the TRC and that was not reflected here. And I think that needs to be teased out.
And, and I would echo just how proud we are of the work we're seeing here. And I know, taking the, measuring these metrics and keeping this data is incredibly time-consuming and detail-oriented, but it also tells such a fabulous story that we wouldn't know how to ask without that data. And I think it's how we reflect back to the community, you know, this is what you've paid for, this is what we are, you've supported. And I, I think that is an, you know, an awesome relationship back with the community to, to take that data and, and supply it. So I'm, I'm, of all those things, especially proud of you in, in keeping the, having no turnover in therapists, so that, that continuum of care and creating a culture where people feel supported, where they can stay and do really hard work, that nobody quite knew what it was going to be until they got there. And I think that speaks volumes.
So, a quick overview, this is not the time for a deep dive on this, but there has been a commitment in transparency, accountability, and continuous quality improvement to establish a TRC advisory group. I want to just share, and we'll come back with more detail on this, but the, sort of the mission statement that we've drafted for that group would be that the mission of the Treatment and Recovery Center Advisory Group is to create a team of community leaders, subject matter experts, and lived experience advocates with a broad range of experience and expertise in behavioral health and integrated care. The TRC advisory group will collaborate with community members, seeking urgent mental health and substance use services at the TRC and provide strategies and feedback to support this mission. There are five points in terms of the structure of this group. First one is that it's, it will be advisory in nature. It'll provide consensus-based recommendations to the TRC and to the Douglas County Crisis Response Coalition, more on that in a minute. It will guide a process of continuous quality improvement, work collaboratively to promote integration among stakeholders, and this is important, provide a forum for elevating systemic challenges and implementing evidence-based informed solutions. The Burt Nash team and the county have had some conversations about what the structure should look like, and we've identified five areas of community stakeholders. The first is, we need physician and clinical expertise. The second is, we need community advocates. The third is, we live, we need lived experience expertise. We need representation from law enforcement, EMS, and the justice system. And the last is organizational management, human services, and legal expertise. So the idea is a table that would have two to three of, two to three individuals from each of those sectors. And that combination of people should also sort of lean, be able to lean in and embody this sort of diversity, equity, and inclusion type of spirit. So the TRC advisory group should be committed to reflecting the interests of our stakeholders, which means the members and work groups must include subject matter and lived experience experts. At least 35% of all members shall have direct lived experience with mental illness, substance use disorders, or suicidality. The advisory group will embrace inclusion and represent the diversity of our community. The advisory group will champion human rights, recognizing the specific needs of the individuals served by the TRC and defending the inherent rights and worth of all. The advisory group will also ensure equity by requiring members to actively work to remove barriers to care and improve outcomes by focusing on underserved and marginalized community members. The individuals serving on the TRC advisory group shall recognize that holding a belief isn't enough. These beliefs must translate into visible and deliberate action. That's the draft that our team has put together and what we would like to do is to give that, one, for a review on, you know, have we, have we captured the spirit of diversity, equity, and inclusion that we should be striving for? And then to have a process where we could elevate some people who should be outreach for consideration to this group, but also a completely open process that are for members of the public would like to apply to be a part of this body. And we will give that list of candidates to the GPL cohort, the Harvard GPL group, the leadership team from there, the government performance lab from the Kennedy School that's working on the 911 Alternatives Group, to come back and give you a recommendation of a, of a panel of people to fulfill that. So there would be space and time for that group to tweak and adjust this draft. We can go into more detail there, but this is the framework that we've started with in terms of, we're not there yet, but we've made a lot of progress.
Bob, as that language evolves, can you share that with us so that we can kind of push it out through our networks to see, get that to the community and, and see who might come forward as kind of self-identifying of folks that would serve well in that role?
Yes.
We'll bring it back to the commission for formal consideration for appointment.
Okay, well, we started late and we know our time is short. We have just a few more minutes before we start our 5:30 business meeting, but I just want to express my gratitude for y'all being here today, your patience with us getting started, but more importantly, the work that you're doing every day at the TRC. As I said before, these numbers are very, very encouraging and, and I look forward to learning more as you learn more and, and tackling challenges as they come, but also celebrating our success. So thank you very much. And with that, we'll adjourn to our 5:30 business meeting.